The Distinguished Service Award is presented to a member of the Association for Meritorious Service in the Science and Art of Medicine. It is one of the AMA's highest honors. This year, your Board of Trustees has selected two winners, Dr. Vivian Penn of Washington DC and Dr. Cameron Najat of Palo Alto, California. First, we recognize Dr. Vivian Penn, a trailblazer for African-Americans and women throughout her career. Dr. Penn was the only African-American and the only woman in her graduating class at the University of Virginia School of Medicine. Later, she became the first African-American and third woman in the United States ever to chair an academic pathology department at Howard University. And in 1991, she became the first full-time director of the Office of Research on Women's Health at the National Institutes of Health, holding the position until her retirement in 2011. It may be incomprehensible now, but 30 years ago, women were not routinely included in scientific studies of treatment for various diseases and for prescription medications. Under Dr. Penn's leadership, the Office of Research on Women's Health implemented a systemic effort to ensure that women were included in NIH clinical trials and to improve the prevention, diagnosis, and treatment of illnesses in women. Dr. Penn helped raise awareness of women's health issues as well as our under-representation in science and medicine worldwide. Since retiring, Dr. Penn has remained active in academics and in organized medicine at both the National Medical Association and the American Medical Association. She also serves as a Senior Scientist America at the NIH Fogarty International Center. Dr. Penn, with grit and intelligence, you have carved out a career as a physician, academic leader, public health official, and mentor. We all stand on your shoulders. I am pleased to present you with the AMA's Distinguished Service Award.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Mr. Speaker, Madam President, esteemed members of the Board of Trustees, officers and other officials of the American Medical Association, and to the membership of AMA, I offer my sincere and humble appreciation for your having bestowed upon me the AMA's 2020 Distinguished Service Award. Knowing of the prestigious physicians who have previously been selected by you for this honor, I accept it with the knowledge that it serves as a challenge to me, that I must continue to contribute whatever I am able and facilitate others to pursue science-based medical care and information, investing our experiences in all the ways that can provide inspiration or assistance for the aspirations of new physicians, and not just advocate for, but to be ever active in promoting and achieving health equity with empathy, justice, and excellence for the good of our peoples and our profession. It is especially heartwarming to me to be recognized in my senior years and to know that what I have attempted to accomplish has been considered of some import to others in our profession. But I say this with gratitude for the many both world-recognized educators, physicians, and friends, as well as some whose names may not have meaning for you, but who are so contributory to my professional life, for they're giving me the courage to follow in the uncharted pathways they blaze for all of us, and especially for women and people of color, to have the opportunities that I have had for superb medical education and career opportunities. I have enjoyed roles throughout my double career, both as a pathologist as well as a policymaker in government, that I would never have dreamed would have been possible for me. But I consider my most worthy achievements not those of my own, but the legacy I find in those of my former students and mentees, how they have excelled in their many diverse roles and continue to reach back to those that follow them as mentors and role models as they rise to positions of leadership in so many arenas. I am so proud of them, and just knowing that I might have had a small role in encouraging them or setting an example of how the pursuit of opportunities in medicine can and will open many doors is my major gratification for what my careers have afforded me, and I hope that same legacy will be continued for each of you and for all of us. You, members and officers of the AMA, you've made me very proud today, and while I'm also dutifully humbled that you have deemed me worthy of this distinguished honor, and I accept it along with the challenges it represents, with my deep gratitude and my very sincere appreciation, thank you.
Our next winner is aptly named the father of modern operative laparoscopy. Dr. Cameron Najat is an internationally renowned surgeon and naturalized American citizen. After graduating from Tehran University School of Medicine, he completed his residency training in obstetrics and gynecology at the State University of New York at Buffalo, and later settled in Palo Alto, California, where he owns and operates a surgical institute. Believing since early in his practice that minimally invasive surgery is preferable to traditional open techniques, Dr. Najat introduced numerous methods and techniques in video-assisted and robotic surgery. His pioneering work has fundamentally changed contemporary surgery and opened a path for surgeons around the world to help their patients. His impact on gynecology and reproductive medicine has been profound, as he has transformed treatment for conditions such as endometriosis, uterine fibroids, and infertility. He's also influenced advances in urology as well as colorectal, vascular, and thoracic surgery. For his patients, his techniques have meant less pain, fewer complications, and shorter recovery time. His patients uniformly credit him for his expert skill, compassionate bedside manner, and for restoring hope in their ability to recover from serious conditions. His care for patients extends beyond the exam room and operating theater to the public arena. Along with his brothers, both renowned reproductive surgeons in their own right, Dr. Najat founded the Endomarch Global Movement to address the urgent needs of those suffering with endometriosis throughout the world. Dr. Najat is also described as a first-rate educator and mentor, willing to teach his techniques so that young physicians can become better surgeons. Dr. Najat, for your tremendous contributions in the field of minimally invasive surgery and for your service to your patients, colleagues, and the worldwide community, the AMA is pleased to present you with the Distinguished Service Award.
Thank you, Madam President, for your kind introduction, and congratulations for your many contributions to the AMA. Sir Speaker, Madam President, and respected House of Delegates, being recognized by the AMA's highest award, the Distinguished Service Award is a true honor. I'm humbled and grateful to the Board of Trustees for selecting me and to the House of Delegates for their endorsement. My heartfelt gratitude and thanks for the never-ending support of Dr. Robert Wong, past president of AMA, Dr. Ricardo Aziz, CEO, and Mr. Sean Tipton, Chief Advocacy, Policy, and Development Officer at the ASRM. My focus in medicine has always been on fertility and endometriosis. It was then that I realized endometriosis is an enigmatic condition, underdiagnosed, misunderstood, which was mainly managed at the time by loparotomy. So I invented and pioneered video-assisted endoscopy, the foundation of modern-day surgery. Then I realized the lack of awareness about endometriosis. Thus, we founded the Worldwide Endometriosis March, or Endomarch, to raise awareness about endometriosis. We are thankful to the AMA's leadership and Dr. Robert Wong for supporting our mission by endorsing Endometriosis March for its inception. I dedicate this award to my patients from around the world who have given me the privilege to participate in their care, my mentors, supporters, friends, and pioneering scientists and physicians around the globe who have a dream to help their patients. I have been blessed in life with a wonderful family. I would like to share this award with them and the souls of my beloved parents and my dear brother Ruston, who are watching, smiling, and celebrating with us. Last but not least, I share this high honor and joyous occasion with my dear brothers Sina, Far, and Ali, who have been with me every step of this long, adventurous, rewarding, and exhilarating road. Thank you again for this immense honor.
I now have the honor of presenting the Benjamin Rush Award for Citizenship and Community Service, one of the AMA's highest honors. This award commemorates the memory of Benjamin Rush, a physician, teacher, delegate to the Continental Congress, and signer of the Declaration of Independence. It's given to a person who has made an outstanding contribution to the community for citizenship and public service, above and beyond the call of duty as a practicing physician. This year's winner is Dr. Charles E. Moore of Mableton, an Atlanta-based ear, nose, and throat specialist. Dr. Moore is a professor at Emory University and chief of service in the Department of Otolaryngology at Grady Health System in Atlanta. He's devoted his career to providing health care to those in need. Dr. Moore says of his experience as a physician, "I saw numerous patients that would seek medical help after their disease process had progressed to a point where they had limited treatment options, patients with cancers that could have been treated easily if the cancer had been identified early, and each time I would say to myself that someone should do something about this travesty." Dr. Moore was that someone. In 2004, he founded the Health Education Assessment and Leadership, or HEAL Coalition, to provide health education and medical services to persons living in Atlanta's poorest zip codes. This grew into the Healing Community Center, which is now a federally qualified health center serving patients in four locations. Healing Community Center serves individuals and families who may have had limited access to health care in the past, with an emphasis on preventive health, nutrition, and wellness. Dr. Moore even leads a weekly walking program for patients and community members. Dr. Moore is an inspiration to all physicians, and his commitment to the betterment of public health sets a high bar we should all strive to reach. Dr. Moore, for your dedication to helping those in greatest need of care and confronting the underlying reasons that create health disparities, the AMA is pleased to present you with the Benjamin Rush Award.
Mr. Speaker, Madam President, members of the House, thank you for this very prestigious award. It is truly an honor that I deeply appreciate. I would also like to thank my parents, family, and friends for their unconditional love and support. Additionally, I would like to thank my colleagues in academia and the communities that I have worked in for their tireless efforts and inspiration. I am truly humbled by this award. In almost every opportunity, there's a challenge, and in accepting that challenge, you are presented with the prospect of creating something great, as well as learning more about yourself and others in the process. HEAL, which is an acronym for Health Education Assessment and Leadership, came into being as a result of my seeing patients that would come for treatment only after their disease process had progressed to such an extent that there were few to no treatment options. Seeing this day after day and month after month, and each time saying to myself, "Someone should do something about this," until one day I realized that maybe that person was supposed to be me. Such despair touches something in all of us. HEAL provides integrated, comprehensive health care in marginalized communities. One of the most important things that we provide is hope, hope in the midst of despair. Knowledge creates hope. It seems that a large part of the populace does not care about a segment of people. That is a failure of education. This current turbulent time that we live in, when so many people are threatened with food insecurity, economic strife, housing crises, and a lack of timely access to medical care, makes us all realize how close we all may be to needing help when none may be available. My experiences demonstrate that as a medical volunteer, you can be a part of the solution. No action is too small. Whether your focus is at the local, national, or international level, you can make a tangible difference. In the process, you will also introduce hope and possibilities to those who are too often I would once again like to thank the AMA for this honor, and I would also like to encourage everyone listening to take the challenge, proactively work to create hope by using your own particular skills and gifts. Thank you.
Next, we present the AMA Foundation Award for Health Education, which was established to recognize the professional and public health education accomplishments of practicing physicians. This year's winner is Dr. Alona Ballasunova of Omaha, Nebraska. Dr. Ballasunova's difficult experiences as an Armenian childhood refugee motivated her to become an addiction psychiatrist and to care for patients in a compassionate way. After medical school at Harvard and a psychiatry residency at Boston University Medical Center, she returned to Nebraska, the state that welcomed her family years ago. Since her return, she is credited with developing and implementing a continuum of addiction psychiatry clinical services from the ground up. At the University of Nebraska Medical Center, she developed an outpatient addiction psychiatric clinic, an inpatient addiction psychiatric program, and a new rotation focused on equipping residents to treat patients with substance use disorders. Dr. Ballasunova has also advanced the education and training of other clinicians by developing a virtual training office of addiction psychiatry materials for residency programs and through her role as senior trainer for the state of Nebraska in the opioid response network. Last year, Dr. Ballasunova wrote and presented a resolution calling for destigmatizing the language of addiction, which was supported by the U.S. Surgeon General and adopted by both the Nebraska Medical Association and our AMA House of Delegates. Dr. Ballasunova, for your leadership in addiction medicine and for your commitment to educating your fellow physicians in compassionate, evidence-based care, we are pleased to present you with the AMA Foundation's Health Education Award.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees and the AMA Foundation for this tremendous honor and to express my gratitude to my specialty society, the American Academy of Addiction Psychiatry, and my state Nebraska Medical Association for endorsing me for this award. In particular, I want to recognize Dr. Linda Ford for her incredible mentorship and for believing in me since day one. I'd like to also thank my husband, Jason, for supporting me and my academic dreams starting back in medical school and for helping me juggle work-life balance with our twin toddlers. You know, never did I imagine in my wildest dreams being recognized for doing something that I love, for educating students, trainees, colleagues, patients, and the public on viewing substance use disorders as the medical conditions that they are, and for destigmatizing the language of addiction, something I passionately believe each and every one of us has the power to do. To end, I'd like to thank my parents, who sacrificed everything to bring their seven-year-old daughter to the United States for political asylum, where she could have the freedoms they never had, where she could be free to pursue and achieve the American dream. I am privileged to be that girl and to pay it forward to the next generation. Thank you all so much.
It is my pleasure today to recognize medical executives who've rendered outstanding service to the profession, working to address the needs of physicians and promote good care for our patients. First, we present the Medical Executive Meritorious Achievement Award. That award goes to Ms. Susan D'Antoni. Ms. D'Antoni began her career as a medical society executive in Louisiana, where she served as executive director of the Orleans Parish Medical Society for 17 years. In 2006, she moved to Maryland, where she was hired by the Montgomery County Medical Society, later rising to CEO. Ms. D'Antoni is highly respected as a leader in the field of medical association management, skilled in advocacy, community relations, recruitment, and retention. She cares deeply about people. After initiating a survey that showed an increase in physician burnout rates in Montgomery County, she developed an early intervention counseling program that has assisted dozens of physicians to date. Ms. D'Antoni has demonstrated exceptional crisis management through two disasters as well, Hurricane Katrina in Louisiana and later a fire that destroyed the Montgomery County Medical Society's headquarters. After Hurricane Katrina, she assisted physicians in returning to New Orleans and rebuilding their homes and offices so they could resume medical services. And after the fire, she was responsible for recovery, restoration, and rebuilding the MCMS headquarters in just one year. Please join me in congratulating Susan D'Antoni for her selection by the AMA for this year's Medical Executive Meritorious Achievement Award.
Thank you, Dr. Kreidel. Mr. Speaker, Madam President, members of this House, I thank the American Medical Association for this meaningful recognition. It has been my privilege and pleasure for the last 31 years to represent, serve, and advocate for you and your patients. It is truly gratifying to work at a grassroots level as I witness your passion for medicine, address your practice challenges, and celebrate the rewards which come from caring for patients each and every day. It's also exciting to work with physician leaders to bring an individual physician's idea or concern to the state level and then to this House, which results in enhanced health care delivery and access and/or improved fiscal policy. Organized medicine is truly at its best when physicians and medical association staff at the local, state, and national levels work together to improve the environment in which you practice. I thank MedKai, the Maryland State Medical Society, for nominating me and the physician leaders who wrote letters of support in both Maryland and Louisiana. As a past president of the American Association of Medical Society Executives, I am grateful for the collaboration of my own staff and from my colleagues across the country. I thank my husband, children, and entire family for understanding and encouraging my passion for my career in organized medicine. And I dedicate this award to my mom, who is now in hospice care. She's always been my greatest cheerleader. Thank you again for this award and for recognizing my passion, dedication, and commitment to your profession, to you, and to your patients. We make an incredible team.
Colleagues, next we will present the AMA's Medical Executive Lifetime Achievement Award. This award is made to medical executives of a county, state, or specialty society who have contributed substantially to the goals and ideals of the medical profession over a significant period of service. This year, the AMA recognizes seven leaders who have earned this honor. First, Mark Andrew Jeskey, former executive vice president of the American College of Rheumatology. Penny S. Mills, former executive vice president and chief executive officer of the American Society of Addiction Medicine. Catherine M. Rydel, CEO emeritus of the American Academy of Neurology. Philip A. Shu, executive vice president and chief financial officer of the Medical Society of the State of New York. Robert Bob W. Seligson, executive vice president and chief executive officer of the North Carolina Medical Society. Tenawh Wells, chief executive officer of the Palm Beach County Medical Society. And Dr. Douglas E. Henley, former executive vice president and chief executive officer of the American Academy of Family Physicians, who has also served as a member of this House of Delegates. Please join me in congratulating all the winners of the Medical Executive Lifetime Achievement Award.
Dr. Kreidel, Mr. Speaker, Madam Vice Speaker, I want to thank you for this award. This is as close as I will get to ever getting an Academy Award, so in typical Academy Award style, I have lots of people that I need to thank for this award. First of all, I'd like to thank Doctors John Goldman, Joe Bailey, Richard Tompkins, Audrey Nelson from the Mayo Clinic, Dr. Christopher Alexander, and most of all, Dr. Ray Scalatar for helping us secure this seat. Moving on, I'd like to thank Dr. Roy Altman, recognize Dr. Altman, who was our first delegate, Dr. Melvin Britton, who was our alternate delegate for over 20 years, he served on the Triple S., and also the RUC. On a personal note, I'd like to thank William Nelligan, past president of the American College of Cardiology, and Dr. Colin Rory, past executive American College of Emergency Physicians, for being mentors and friends. Moving to the present, Dr. Gary Bryant and Dr. Eileen Moynihan, who are delegate and alternate delegate at this point. And last but not least, most important, my wife, Joanne, who, while I was gone all those days, weeks, and months, kept the fort down here at home, and without her, for sure, I never would have received this award. So, thank you again, and I will cherish this always.
Thank you, Dr. Kreidel. Mr. Speaker, Madam President, members of the House, thank you for this great honor. I have spent most of my 40-plus-year career in health care working for two outstanding medical societies, the American College of Cardiology, or ACC, then as CEO of the American Society of Addiction Medicine, fondly known as ASAM. I'm so proud that ASAM is represented today on the AMA Board of Trustees by Dr. Levin. I have so many people to thank for their mentorship, support, and friendship. I'm grateful to Marie Nicknick, who first hired me at ACC. Later, I was fortunate to work with Christine McEntee, ACC CEO, who taught me about medical society leadership and remains a dear friend. In fact, I have a close network of friends which grew from working with medical societies. The inspiration from the physician leadership and advocating for patients are what have made medical society management such a satisfying career for me. I want to personally thank the ASAM leadership, including Dr. Early, ASAM's current president, Dr. Clark, immediate past president, Dr. Baxter, who was president when I started, and Doctors Gitlow and Miller, who also serve in the House of Delegates. Since retiring last June, I am an executive in residence for the MHA program at Cornell University. I hope to steer one or two students into medical society management careers, where they too will find the deep, personal, and professional satisfaction I have found. Thank you again for this honor.
Thank you, Dr. Kreidel. Mr. Speaker, Madam President, and members of the House of Delegates, thank you so much for this wonderful award. In my 26 years of attending the House of Delegates, I've watched many of my friends and mentors receive this award. I truly am humbled to join them. In 1994, when I joined the North Dakota Medical Association, I learned firsthand what "small but mighty" meant. I also learned from the NDMA and the AMA the power of speaking with one voice. I sincerely thank both organizations for giving me a life-changing opportunity. by introducing me to the House of Medicine. When they did, I was hooked. In my twenty-one years at the American Academy of Neurology, I've watched thousands of volunteers unselfishly give of their time and talent for the good of the whole. I've seen leaders and volunteers passionately advocate for their profession and their patients. I will forever be grateful to the Academy for the opportunity to work with and learn from extraordinary physician leaders. The added bonus: many have become my lifelong friends. In closing, I'd like to thank the execs in the audience. Having been both a state CEO and a national CEO, I've experienced the power of working and learning together. Much of my success is because of my interaction with these groups of dynamic executives. They are talented, committed, and a heck of a lot of fun to be around. In the future, when they receive this award, I will enthusiastically join in celebrating each of them. In closing, I do have one piece of advice for the newer execs. Your number-one responsibility is to grow the next ship of leaders for your organization. Their success is your success. Always remember that no one rises to low expectations. So inspire and challenge your team, and then sit back and watch them soar. Thank you so much.
Dr. Kreidel, Mr. Speaker, Madam Vice Speaker, Madam President, Board Members, Officers, Delegates, and Guests, I am extremely honored to have been selected by the American Medical Association to be the recipient of the Medical Executive Lifetime Achievement Award. Indeed, it has been a lifetime. I've spent a major part of my working career with the Medical Society of the State of New York, working there for more than thirty years, the last ten of which have been as the executive vice president. Receiving this reward actually coincides nicely with the fact that I am retiring at the end of this year. My job has provided me with the opportunity to work closely with many of you. I am always amazed at the intensity and focus that you bring to every discussion. I want to take this opportunity to thank the New York delegation, the Misne Leadership and Staff, and the Boards of the Physician Foundation for Excellence and the Physician Advocacy Institute for allowing me to have been part of their lives over these many years. Lastly, I'd like to thank my lovely wife Barbara for sharing this journey with me. We have just celebrated our forty-seventh anniversary, and I look forward to celebrating many more with her, with my children, and with my fourteen grandchildren. So thank you very much. Have a good meeting, and please stay safe.
I would like to thank the American Medical Association for this prestigious honor, as well as the Florida Medical Association and Don Jones, who thirty-eight years ago gave me my first opportunity to work in organized medicine. A special thanks to the Texas Medical Association for their longstanding support of the North Carolina Medical Society, and for the Connecticut State Medical Society and Timmy Norbeck for leading the charge with a group of twenty-two medical societies that took on the managed care titans in a class-action lawsuit over unfair business practices and won. As a result, the Physicians Foundation was created. Over the last seventeen years, the foundation has distributed more than fifty million dollars in support of research, advocacy, physician leadership, and physician well-being. I really look forward to continuing to advocate for the greatest profession on this earth as the foundation's CEO, a new role I began this summer. Finally, a huge thank you to my beloved North Carolina Medical Society for nominating me for this award. My twenty-six years at the North Carolina Medical Society offered me endless opportunities and experiences. I will never be able to adequately thank the leaders, the members, and the greatest staff in the country for your incredible support over the years. Thank you again for this prestigious honor.
Thank you, Dr. Kreidel. Mr. Speaker, Madam President, and Members of the House, I would like to thank the American Medical Association for this award, and a special thank you to the Florida Medical Association delegation and my home Palm Beach County Medical Society. A special thank you to Dr. James Goldenberg for this nomination. And I would also like to recognize the outstanding AMA staff and fellow AMSU colleagues for their partnership all these years. This is an extremely special moment for me. To say that I am delighted and honored to receive a lifetime achievement award from the AMA is an understatement. Serving as CEO of the Palm Beach County Medical Society and working with the AMA has been an incredible journey. Early on, I learned that organized medicine is a team sport played with rules. And I remember attending my first AMA meeting twenty-two years ago in San Diego. Walking into the meeting was impressive but a bit overwhelming experience. A well-meaning AMA delegate, Dr. Dick Van Eldick in Palm Beach County, escorted me to sit with the board of delegation. I quickly learned my first AMA lesson when another delegate informed me that staff does not sit on the floor of the House and escorted me to the appropriate area for Federation staff. Lesson learned: rules matter. And forever after that, I have been learning from the AMA, which has been my source of guidance. The Palm Beach County Medical Society has initiated many programs inspired by the AMA, including the Physician Leadership Academy, Physician Wellness Program, Opioid Response Task Force, Care Coordination Training Initiative, Disaster Preparedness, Cultural Competency, and now the COVID-19 Response Task Force. A great pride is the future of medicine, inspired by a presentation by the Michigan Medical Association at the AMA Advocacy Conference. Now in our thirteenth year, the Palm Beach County Future of Medicine continues to bring together thought leaders to explore challenges, innovations, and strategies of how to improve quality of care. AMA past president, Dr. Cecil Wilson, was our champion and initiated a tradition for all AMA presidents to participate in the Future of Medicine Summit. This includes Dr. Bailey's recent virtual presentation. To me, this is the true value of the AMA: working together to fulfill the mission to promote the art and science of medicine and the betterment of public health. As medicine continues to face unprecedented challenges, I am reassured that the AMA will be leading the way, and I will be forever grateful for this honor. Thank you.
I would like to express my sincere thanks to my Academy delegation and the AMA Board of Trustees for this recognition. I am truly honored. And a special thanks also to my wife Mary for her love and support over fifty-four years, including my many decades of involvement in the Academy and organized medicine. In my remaining time, I want to speak directly to all of you as representatives of the House of Medicine. I have participated in this House since 1993, and over this time, I have been pleased to see it evolve in two very important ways: first, to become more diverse in its composition, led, I might add, by the diversity of the AAFP delegation; and second, the gradual willingness of this body to seriously focus on improving our health care system. But on this second point, we still have important work to do, as exemplified by this one slide showing life expectancy in the United States compared to the rest of the developed world since the 1960s, a slide that frankly, I find embarrassing. While there are likely many reasons our nation trails on this important measure of life expectancy, I will call your attention to three that I believe are the most obvious and critical to achieve a better health care system for the American people. First, following World War II, these nations, through varied pathways, sought to achieve affordable health care coverage for all. The U.S. did not. Second, these nations, except the United States, chose to fund social support services to a greater extent than funding for health care services. On average, they spend $2 on social support services for every dollar spent on health care. The U.S. spends only forty-nine cents. And third, these nations chose to financially support and organize their health care systems around foundational primary care. The U.S. did not, despite evidence demonstrating that increasing the number of primary care physicians has a two-and-a-half times greater impact on improving life expectancy when compared to a similar increase in subspecialty physicians. So the journey to a better health care system for the American people continues, but the pathway forward, I think, is clear. And I challenge this House to be bold to achieve affordable health care coverage for all with a greater investment in both foundational primary care and social support services to achieve health equity. As Dr. King once said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." These are three things that truly matter. Let's not be silent anymore. Thank you again for this honor and this recognition.